Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the business meetings for the city of Prattville this evening. We do have one public hearing tonight, and then we will move into our council agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll for us, please?
Counselors Sanders, Counselor Jackson, Counselor Chambers, Counselor Merrick, Counselor Whaley, Counselor Stritchett, Counselor Boone.
Having a quorum present, I do call this meeting to order. I will now read in, public hearing, item number one. It is a resolution to authorize the mayor to have overgrown grass and weeds at 1644 Dodgers Drive, 781 Redmond Lane, and 428 Upper Kingston Road abated, and charge any incurred expenses for the abatement process pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Is there anyone tonight who wishes to speak in favor of resolution number one? Hearing none, is there anyone present this evening who wishes to speak against resolution number one? Hearing none, this public hearing is closed. At this time, I will invite you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and for our invocation, which will be given tonight by Counselor Sanders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I come to you tonight thanking you for the many blessings that you give us. Father, I ask that you'll be with those that are sick and the ones that are suffering from loss. Father, I pray for your healing and a peace and comfort that only you can provide. Father, I pray that you'll be with us tonight as we conduct the business of the city, pray that you'll give us wisdom and knowledge, help us to glorify you in all that we do. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselors Sanders, Counselor Jackson, Counselor Chambers, Counselor Merrick, Counselor Whaley, Counselor Stritchett, Counselor Boone.
Having a quorum present, I do call our regular meeting to order. The character trait of the month is trustworthiness, gaining the confidence of others by demonstrating integrity and reliability. At this time, we have an opportunity to approve our minutes from both the public hearing and the city council meeting held on July the first, 2025. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve these minutes. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of approving our minutes, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And our minutes are approved. At this time, we will be welcoming comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda only. We do have two comment times. If you are new to our meeting schedule and the way things work, our first comment time is for comments on things we will be voting on and discussing tonight only. Our second comment time will allow you to speak on other items, but we do ask that for this time, you reserve it for things that are on our agenda for tonight. We ask that you print your name and address for the city clerk. We'll be calling you forward one at a time, and you will have three minutes to address the council. I do have some special instructions for us this evening, and I will be reading these now and again at our second comment time because some people do slip in during the middle of the meeting, and they may have missed these. So these are instructions for how we are to handle our comment time here tonight. These comment periods have gotten more and more contentious. It is election season, and there are some who use this time to make personal attacks or tear down an elected official or puff up a candidate, including themselves. Public comment is important, so we will keep having this time despite its misuse. A three-minute time period will remain in effect. I do want to remind everyone that this period is for comment, not dialogue, and you are not entitled to a response here. Note, because I know that I will be misquoted, that I did not say that you are not entitled to a response. I said during this time period, which is not designed for dialogue. I do encourage you, though, just like I do every week, that if you want more discussion, please reach out to anyone on the council at another time. So we will begin our comment time right now. Yes, sir, please state your name and address for the council, and you will have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Ray Womack. My address is 2223 County Road 66, Prattville, Alabama. I'm an engineer with Krebs Engineering. I'm the project manager for the North Highland Park project. And I just wanted to give the mayor and council a quick update. We did receive bids last week on that project. They were about twice what our estimate was, so we recommended to the city to reject all bids on that project. We believe that the bids had some, I won't say they were any funny business, they just, we couldn't evaluate them because the numbers were all over the charts. And I've got copies, if anybody would like a copy of the bid tab today. We recommended to Kelly to go back to a tiered design on the lower court system. That'll take the wall from a nine-foot height to a six-foot height. We'll still have the same amount of playing courts. We'll still have the same opportunity for the rigid structure over the basketball court or the full court. And we've also suggested to try something that we've done on several other projects, which is to break it up into multiple bid packages. And so we can have a wall package, an earthwork package, an asphalt package. We had, we built the University of South Alabama Stadium in that fashion. It was 75 bid packages, probably saved them about $5 million because you didn't have contractor overhead on all of that work. I believe that would allow smaller contractors that are registered with the building, with the general contractor license, to bid on that project and give us better control over the project overall. And so that is Krebs' recommendation to the city as to how to move forward on that project.
Thank you so much for that explanation, especially for the sake of the public who may see the item and not know exactly what is going on. Do any counselors have any questions or comments for our engineer? Yes, sir, Mr. Chambers?
Yes, I'd just see if I could get a copy of that, if you don't mind, for me to review. I appreciate it.
Do any other counselors have any questions or comments for our engineer on this project?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time this evening. We appreciate it. Made things clear as mud. Yes, sir, Mr. Jackson?
Now, so basically, we're gonna reject this, these bids tonight. So how long are you expecting the process to take to get started again?
So the tiered design was our original design. We still have that. We just put it on a shelf and then did the alternate design for the single level on the lower court. And so we can be ready to go to the streets pretty quickly once you guys give us the go-ahead. And so we've got structural design, electrical, civil, all of that for that particular design. It's just been shelved.
Thank you so much. Ms. Finnegan, please come forward, state your name and address for the council. You'll have three minutes to address us.
Hi, John Lynn Finnegan, 211 Deere Trace. My comments and rhetorical questions are regarding the regular agenda items. Ordinance number one, the Commerce Street Partners LLC property fronts Old Farm Lane. They are paying $950,000 for it, yet do they have to build a public roadway in order for the property to be surplus to them? If so, why? Resolution number two, this year's capital projects fund budget had $400,000 for Old Ridge Road paving, yet last month you approved using $383,500 plus of it for other paving projects. The $59,000 traffic study is to determine infrastructure needs for all of Old Ridge Road and is coming from the Education One Cent Reserve. Isn't this infrastructure or engineering? Why are educational reserves being used? Projects Queen and Magnolia incentives are recommended by the economic development team, which I believe is the mayor, Lisa Byrd, Daniel Oakley, and Amy Hilliard. Resolution number three, I went to J&amp;G Flea Market today and spoke with the owners. They informed me, they were told Rural King was the interested shopping center purchaser, and according to its website, a typical store is 80,000 square feet, same as the dimensions mentioned in the resolution. If purchased, J&amp;G would have 60 days to vacate the premises. This purchase, of course, is dependent upon approval tonight. Zoom info site states Rural King's net worth is likely in the hundreds of millions, if not billions of dollars, yet we're offering incentives and displacing the 180-plus flea market vendors and others. Oh, and J&amp;G offered to buy it, but they were turned down. Resolution number four, tell citizens nothing about who the incentives are for, where it will be located, nothing. I feel strongly that actions on these large projects and others should be held until the elections are over. A regime change may take place, and they may have a whole different outlook about them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Finnegan. Do any counselors have any questions or comments for Ms. Finnegan? Thank you so much. Yes, sir, Mr. Mullins, you'll have three minutes. Please do state your name and address for the council.
Thank you. I'm Dennis Mullins, 521 Weatherby Trail. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the North Highland Park Community and District Two. As I just listened to Ray Womack, the engineer, give his, I guess, report to you on why we need to reject this bid. This is what I know. I was there at the bid opening. Robert Stritchett, you was not there. Tommy Merrick, you were not there. Laura Lee Boone, you were not there. You are on the Parks and Recs Committee. Curious to why you were not there. Rhetorical question, don't need answered. The bids were open, two sealed bids, two contractors were there. Let me pull them up. I got it right here. Coburn Contractors, they had a bid of 1.516730. Triptech Construction LLC, 1.323760. Two vetted contractors, I assume, they had the plans, they looked them over, the bids were sealed, two separate contractors, with a difference of the two, $192,970. In all my experience of being in a lot of bid openings, this is a close bid. The numbers are correct, and I'm looking at you in the eye right now, saying this is a grave egregious injustice to the North Highland Park community. One of these bids, this consent agenda, ought to be null and void tonight because of the rejection of this. You can spend tens of millions of dollars in other areas in our community, yet you want to reject and refute this community, a project, that's pittance, pittance, of what other communities are getting, what other areas, districts are getting. I strongly encourage you tonight, strongly, to reject and not even do this consent agenda unless you pull this item out, because people will be watching. You should pick one of these bidders tonight, because these are legitimate bids. And by the way, you just knocked out two contractors that probably will never come back and bid in Prattville again. Why would they waste their time, talent, and treasure to know that they're just gonna get rejected when they put all this effort into it? I know. I've done a lot of bids before. That's what I do. I build things. One of these bids ought to be accepted tonight, and if you don't, it will be a grave injustice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins. Do any counselors have any questions or comments for Mr. Mullins? Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Robinson? Please state your name and address for the council clerk, and you will have three minutes to address us.
Barbara Robinson, 123 White Oak Court, Prattville, Alabama. I just want to know, did y'all not make enough agendas for tonight? And I also want to know, is there any way I can get a copy of the bid that was turned in because the man left? I would have asked Tim Ford.
Mrs. Robinson, this is not a time for dialogue. You may talk with the clerk afterwards. She will have a copy of the bid at some point. If she does not have one tonight, we can probably get a copy through the city.
Okay, but I also want to know, I'm on an agenda. Do y'all have any extras?
I guess the crowd was large, and it got taken. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Clerk is going to share one with you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins.
Any questions for Mrs. Robinson? All right, Mr. Semus, please come forward, state your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
Yes, thank you. Dr. Jerry Semus, 141 North Chestnut Street here in Prattville. I wanted to touch on the incentives tonight. The first one, number four, Project Magnolia, doesn't tell us anything. The only thing I know is you're gonna give something to somebody. I can't believe you'd vote on it. Your council rules even say that you're supposed to put an approximate amount in the title of it, and there's no money in the title. As far as number three, Project Queen, all I really know is that John Gillen and his shopping association has this buyer, supposedly Royal King, and we want to help remodel. I think it's a slippery slope. There's lots of shopping malls that are rundown, and so we're gonna have a whole litany of other shopping malls that are gonna want to have help. I don't think you realize, I track all the incentives. I don't think you realize how much money in future income stream you're giving away that are gonna be needed later down the road for mushrooming debt, aging infrastructure, and education. Just to give you an idea, abatements, rebates, sales tax, and property tax, $20,300,673 from 2012 to 2024. From 2017 to 2024, another $14,109,287 for economic commitments, for a total of $34 million. The bottom line is, people say, well, we're getting a $40 million building if we do this incentive. And I say, what does it matter? You gave away for 10, 15, 20 years, all your property tax, all your sales tax. It doesn't matter that you got 24 employees, some of which may not even reside in Prattville. So the bottom line is, with today's technology, 15 to 20 years from now, those factories probably will be obsolete. You need to be very selective in your picking these economic development projects, because they need to pay high dividends, and they need to have measurable benchmarks, and they need to have effective clawbacks. Otherwise, we're in the giveaway business. So that's really all I have for this session. I'll talk later in the second open mic. Does anybody have any questions at all for me?
Are there any questions for Mr. Semus? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mullins, I'm gonna ask that you reserve your comments for our second comment period, as you've already had one turn at the mic, and we have a very full agenda this evening, so.
I got other stuff I need to talk about. It's only been.
Well, I'm sorry, you've used your three minutes. Please come to the second comment period, and we'll allow you to speak again. Mr. Mayor, do you have a report?
Good evening, counselors. Just wanted to mention that our Prattville Police Department recently had four graduates from the Montgomery Police Academy, and like to announce that Officer Hyatt won top honors in all three areas: academics, firearms, and overall top officer, which is the Marvin Stanley Award. This is an honorable and rare accomplishment. I'm very confident in this group, and they will serve our community as well. I witnessed firsthand their additional training that included TASER training. Prattville PD will be sending nine more to the next academy at the end of July, and they were currently in our internal mini academy, that is a month before the 14-week academy. This mini academy helps our officers perform at the top of the classes they attend, and many times achieve awards or serve as class officers. Also, our Prattville Police Department, under the leadership of Chief Thompson, stands head and shoulders above other departments. Their professionalism, transparency, and commitment to community partnerships place them beyond reproach. Simply put, they're not just serving our city, they're setting the standard for others to follow. And counselors, up on the screen, I have our little LRAP video, a few minutes long, but just wanted to show just a little bit of that. But the LRAP video that was recently released to help educate our citizens about this option for sewer lateral assistance, I hope everyone will take the time to share this information with their constituents and many other Prattvillians around, because this is one, as so many of us remember, Council President Boone, is that, you know, it took us about six years to get this through with the legislative act, and it's taken a good while for us to get there. Now, with all that said, because this LRAP program, it actually benefits our wastewater infrastructure so, so much, because it keeps a lot of the rainwater out of our system that a lot of times overwhelms the system, overwhelms our potential plants, and then that just increases the cost of doing that business. But because of the success of this project, the LRAP, we're looking into an additional project that's called PAR, P-A-R. The name can change, but it stands for Parking Lot Area Renewal. This will be beneficial not only to our citizens, if we can get it to come about, but our businesses as well. I'll be bringing more information to you on this as soon as possible. But all again, we're striving to be business-friendly each and every day. The construction of the new public safety training building is almost finished. The plan is to have all furniture moved in by next Friday and occupy the building after final inspections are completed. The old trailer that the Prattville Fire Department used for a training division has been worked out, it's been worked out for over 20 years. It will be repurposed for our city's engineering department. We're excited to welcome firefighters and police officers from around the country who will benefit from this training facility. Counselor Stritchett, just like to say, congratulate your wife, Dr. Stritchett, for being announced as the new executive director for Voices. I believe that's correct. Wish her much success in this new role, and you as well, as I know is in any marriage, is one moves into a new role, there's always a lot of give and take, and so definitely be praying and wishing y'all the best. Tonight, we have three separate economic development project agenda items. And counselors, with your support, agenda item ordinance number one is the disposal of property on Old Farm Lane to Commerce Street Partners. This is the first of several planned contracts to bring new retailers to the market. This 5.7 acres that will be sold with roadway improvements being added by the company locating. We look forward to sharing the retailer's name in the near future. With your support, agenda item resolution number three is a resolution for Project Queen. This is an opportunity to partner and bring a destination large box retailer to Midtown to revitalize our 31 corridor. This partnership should increase the tax generation of the shopping center and increase ad valorem for the school system. Prattville selected it as a location due to population, strength of local shopping patterns, and the woven city and rural components of our city and county. Also, counselors, with your support, agenda item resolution number four is for Project Magnolia. This resolution is support for location and industrial access funds. Industrial recruitment is a cornerstone to the mission of our community, this council and my administration. We have a chance to strengthen the job opportunities for our citizens through an industrial project, and I encourage supporting these items. I look forward to sharing more details in the near future. Counselor, also, I'd like to talk about the finance report. It comes around, as we all know, the second meeting of the month, and over here, on our table over here, it has some of our reports that we get that would like to, we have roughly about two dozen of each one of these, and I believe these will be up on the screen whenever Daniel Oakley is giving his report, but they're welcome to the public here. It gives accounts payable, and it talks about our one penny, and then also the breakdown of some of that. So I hope that'll be helpful with so many, because there's been a lot of confusion, misinformation out there, that I think it's really time for us to get the facts out there, as they should be. But like I said, there've been several misleading comments and misinformation about the one cent sales tax and our debt. These charts should help make it clear. Also, there've been some questions about how much we fund our Toga County education system. As an FYI, the numbers on the screen this evening do not include the in-kind services the city of Prattville provides to the Toga County education system, which clearly is approximately over $500,000 each year. There've been some comments made that the Board of Ed used the money that the city of Prattville sent them, was sent back to us for the Stanley Jensen payment. The previous board had agreed to pay $1.78 million toward the stadium. The current board has honored this agreement, but their funding mechanism is up to their discretion. We don't have a say-so in how they spend the money that the city of Prattville provides them, besides it is, except for it has to be spent in the Prattville school area. I have been informed by Daniel Oakley that he has received clear documentation from One Community Outreach United, that the historical marker signs have been ordered and paid to the Alabama Historical Association. These historical markers are cast signs and not signs that are locally manufactured. They have been ordered. Once they arrive, they will be installed. And in closing, counselors, I'd like to leave some words of wisdom from a counselor I sat beside for many years, who actually sat beside my father as well, Councilman Willie Wood Jr. He taught me an important lesson, that sometimes you have to agree to disagree. But I'd like to add on to that, which is, I'd like to remind us all that we can disagree without being disagreeable. Madam President, into my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do any counselors have any questions or comments for the mayor? Mr. Jackson?
Quick question about the LRAP. I know that's something we started, I don't know, what, three, four years ago? I'm not quite sure. How many citizens do you think have taken advantage of the program to this point?
I don't have that number in front of me. I'll definitely be glad to get it. I know Dale Gandy and his team keep that number, and it's been well, well-received. And really, I think the more promotion that we can get, I know we have more than one of the local plumbers that actually have done a very good job of selling it. And because I know a lot of folks that the several thousand dollars that it takes to repair a standard lateral line, this has been a godsend to them. Because at the end of the day, it is added on to their water bill, interest-free, and it's, I believe, $30 a month is added on to their water bill until it's paid in full.
Any other counselors have any questions for the mayor this evening?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will move into reports from the council on special committees. Counselor Sanders, do you have a report this evening? Counselor Jackson?
No.
Counselor Chambers?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Merrick?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Stritchett?
And I have none.
Which brings us to our report on the status of the city finances. Mr. Oakley?
There he is.
I was talking to Dale, actually, Counselor Jackson, about your question, and he said it was about 40 homes as of May. He mentioned something about maybe $70,000 spent thus far, but 40 homes as of May. All right, the first page in your packet's the general fund revenue report, and it shows that we have received $45,877,364 for the fiscal year-to-date, and this represents a 2.58% increase over the same period in the prior year. The next page is the tax breakdown comparison, and on the tax side, we were up 2.26% when compared to the previous June. The next three pages show the general fund expenses broken down by department, and with 75% of the fiscal year complete, we have spent 71.8% of our budgeted expenditures in the general fund. The next page is a wastewater enterprise fund income statement, and the wastewater fund generated a net income from operations of $158,805. Operating expenses and overall expenses are right in line with budget for this point of the year, at, right at about 75%. Next page is the sanitation enterprise fund income statement. Sanitation fund generated a net income of $57,344 for the month, and operating expenses are in line with budget at 73.9%, and overall expenses are slightly below budget at 71.5%. Next page is the judicial special revenue fund income statement. The judicial fund generated a net income of $500,687 for June, and this was due to the remaining budgeted transfer from the general fund being made that month, and that transfer was about $652,000. Expenses in this fund are slightly over budget at 77%. Next page is the gas tax special revenue fund income statement, and gas tax revenues are tracking higher than budget through the first two-thirds of the year. And we do have a local paving project that has been awarded, and that work will begin in earnest in the final quarter of the fiscal year. Next page is the capital projects fund income statement, and it shows that we have spent roughly $21,250,000 on projects in debt service through the first three-fourths of the year. The project expenses this quarter primarily related to Stanley Jensen Stadium renovations, Fairview Avenue, Doster Well improvements, Newton Park Phase II, the council chambers renovation, the public safety training facility, Spillway Park improvements, Project Star renovations, and the J Street extension, and that was a partnership with Toga County. Next page is the group health fund income statement, and this fund has an accumulated net income of $254,057, and a cash balance of $101,023 at the end of June. Next report is the Parks and Recreation Income Report. Next report is the Parks and Recreation Income Report, and it shows that we've collected approximately 78% of our budgeted Parks and Recreation income as of the end of the month, and this totals $708,588 for the first three-quarters of the year. The next page is the bank balances report. And the total of all bank balances citywide at the end of June was $39,717,106. And the next page is the accounts payable and debt balances report. The total outstanding APN debt balance citywide at the end of June was $67,467,543. While the city's non-enterprise fund debt was $36,644,543. And I did want to go into a little bit more detail on this report. You can see it sort of on the screen there. We do actually have copies for anyone who wants them after the meeting. But this report's been posted online for forever. But I usually just read a couple of numbers, so I kind of wanted to go into a little bit more detail, just to make sure everyone understands what's in it. This report not only lists each piece of debt that we have, but also the funding source for that debt. So the way we've kind of handled it is, when we do issue debt, we have a specific revenue stream that we like to try and tie to it. Certain projects may pull on multiple revenue streams. Example of that was Thomas Avenue and the Washington Street, Munch Avenue, Easy Street projects. Those two projects had both stormwater and wastewater pieces, so we've kind of estimated the percentage on debt service between the wastewater fund and the general fund. Just to give you a little bit of an example, so the color codes, and I'm not going to read it all to you, but there's about $30.8 million that's serviced through the wastewater fund, which is through the fees, wastewater fees that everyone pays on their monthly water bill. $2.1 million relates to the Fire Station Four and Police Annex Building construction that is being paid for with Alabama Trust Fund receipts, which are, which come from the state and are earmarked for capital improvements and technology improvements. $3.4 million relates to the improvements and construction of Matt Gray Park 2.0. The service on that debt is coming from the lodging fee receipts, that's a $2 per room night. $161,000 is left to be paid on a fire truck that we financed, and that payment is coming from ambulance fee receipts that are also in the general fund. $4.9 million in debt, or $4.9 million in debt will be paid from the infrastructure bucket of the one-cent tax. $22.3 million is coming from the Parks and Recreation bucket of the one-cent tax, and $3.7 million comes from the Public Facilities bucket of the one-cent tax. And that covers everything that we have to date. This is the first month that the general obligation 2025 warrants appear on this report, so that added $14.83 million. Those were issued in June, that's why they just now shown up on this report. I guess another thing, and the mayor referenced a chart that's up here, there are copies of those at the front as well. There's a flow chart that's more graphical in nature, has a lot of colors on it, and there's some more Excel detail that's also printed up here for everyone to reference, and feel free to take one with you. I've had lots of questions in my office, I guess tis the season, but lots of questions in my office recently about the one-cent sales tax, what it is, what it's used for, things of that nature. So we thought it might be helpful to try and run through each piece and put together this flow chart that is hopefully, there's a line on here, but hopefully it helps everyone kind of see where things are going currently. The blue box at the top is the total budgeted amount for the one-cent sales tax for this current fiscal year. And all the numbers in here are going to represent budgeted numbers for FY '25, just to give us a baseline snapshot look. So the total sales tax is budgeted to bring in about $9.3 million. That is then split down into the orange boxes, where 10% of the one-cent sales tax goes to the general fund reserves. General fund reserves is a separate bank account. We have roughly 50 bank accounts that keep track of various aspects of the finances for the city. General fund currently has approximately $10 million in it, in the general fund reserves, and this 10% is earmarked to go to that continually until our general fund reserves policy is met. And that policy has two components, one of which is that balance needs to be 20% of the general fund revenue from the previous year. The other component is that the unrestricted general fund fund balance needs to be 25% of that general fund revenue from the previous year. The second of those categories, we meet with flying colors. We are still working on the first category, and as of the fiscal year '24 audited numbers, we need that to be about $12.3 million in that account. We're sitting at 10, so we're still working towards that. The other orange box is the rest of the one-cent penny, and it's 90%. And it is divided equally into four distinct, what I call buckets. Each bucket is represented by a purple box. Each one is roughly $2.1 million. The first one is the Parks and Recreation bucket. We'll just kind of go down each bucket and cover them real quick. So we have what I call a safety net, and that's a 25% that I would like to keep and not earmark long-term in each of these buckets, when there is fixed debt that is long-term. And the reason for that is, sales tax is somewhat fickle. It's not like a property tax, it's pretty, pretty steady and steadily increases. Sales tax, you know, is subject to changes in economic conditions. We've seen that during COVID years, early on, and then it swung the other way very quickly. And, you know, so whenever a recession hits, people spend money less, your sales tax goes down, you need to be able to have that cushion in there so that you're only earmarking long-term debt service, in my opinion, at a cap of 75%. So we're, I feel very comfortable that if the economy in Prattville went down 25%, which is a huge number, that we could still make all our debt service payments. So the other pieces in red are kind of what's been, council has chosen and has assigned these portions. There's $930,000 coming out of the Parks and Recreation one-cent bucket that is servicing the debt for the 22A and 22B warrants. Those warrants were used to pay for the Tier One Parks and Recreation projects. The Tier One projects included Stanley Jensen Stadium renovations, the Pratt Park renovations, and the Newton Park Phase One renovations. That's about $930,000 a year, and that's 30-year debt. The next bucket, $600,000 for the 2025 debt service, that is the debt that was just issued in June. And there's a handful of projects that we've disclosed and gone over that relate to that. Of those projects, about $600,000 is what we're pulling from the Parks and Recreation bucket to service that debt. The green box at the bottom is about $38,000, and basically, this is what we're saying is available for Parks and Recreation theoretically in the next fiscal year. So that's the room that's there, which in essence means the Parks and Recreation bucket is kind of tapped out, because we have hit it pretty hard over the past six or seven years to catch up on a lot of the parks renovations that were needed to be done. The next bucket, purple bucket's Public Facilities. It also has a 25% safety net, and that safety net doesn't mean that we cannot budget and spend that money during that year. That only means that I don't want to commit that portion of it into a long-term commitment. So we do budget to spend the safety net within a year if we have it, but it's always based on cash flow. I just don't want to lock it in for a 10-year debt or a 30-year debt, and we need, we need that wiggle right. So below that is a red bucket, it's a red box. It's about $297,000, that's to service a portion of the 2025 debt that was just issued. And then the green box here is 1.2, 1.3 million that would be available for Public Facilities in 2026 and beyond, unless we lock it up longer term. Next, purple bucket's 2.1 million for infrastructure. It also has a safety net tied to it of 25%, which at 25% for those who can't see it, roughly $522,000 for this one year. The first red box is debt service for various projects that are infrastructure-related. These are CWSRF loans from 2016 through 2022-ish, as well as the road and bridge project into the South Industrial Park, that was a very large $7 million project. We didn't borrow that much, we only borrowed about four-ish. But that was also a partnership with Ataga County, so they helped pay for a portion of that as well. The red box below that's $47,000, it's a small piece, it's just one project that was in the 2025 general obligation debt that was just issued, and that's for a construction of a road off of 14, or Fairview. And then the green bucket is $935,000, that's available for infrastructure starting in 2026. One thing I will mention is that the plan is to use that to service the debt on the upcoming McQueen-Smith Road expansion. So that project is well underway, getting closer to being biddable, and you're going to need, I mean, that's a, that's a very large expense. The last purple box is 2.1 million for education, and this is one of the certainly passionate topics and hot topics now, and will continue to be. The red box, the first red box, $522,000, that's 25% of this education bucket, is currently going to the Central Alabama Community College. That is to be used for operation and maintenance expenses at the school. And that agreement was a five-year agreement, and it is set to expire in September, or September 30th of 2026. So there's just one more year in that agreement. The next box down is 50% of this bucket is for the Ataga County Board of Education, and it's roughly $815,000. And it's to be used for education-related expenses within the corporate limits. Initially, it was corporate limits plus the high school and the tech center, those have since been annexed in. So the schools within, for the ACBOE within the city, and that agreement current is set to expire on 9/30/2026. The next box down is $230,000, and that's for the school resource officers for the Ataga County Board of Education. So they are Prattville Police Officers, that we pull 75% of their benefits and salaries for four school resource officers that service the Prattville Schools and the Ataga County, for the Ataga County Board of Education. The city actually has seven school resource officers that service these schools within the city. We currently charge 75% of only four. The next box down is a flat $400,000 per year, and that is set to go towards the Pratt, a museum project that the Ataga County Heritage Association is working on. They've requested funding of $2 million over five years, the council, they may have requested more than that, and the council granted $2 million over five years. That is set to expire on September 30th of 2029. One caveat to that is, they only get that money on a reimbursement basis, so they have to turn in the receipts. They, in essence, are going to have to do the project in order to get the money. But it will be kind of set aside earmarked for them as they move forward, but they have basically five years to get it done. The remaining, the last box in the bottom right is $122,000, that's available for education in fiscal year '26. There's been a lot of talk of needs for the library and how that might fit into the education bucket if council chooses, as those needs are continuing to be evaluated. That's a lot of talking from me. I've covered every box on here. What questions can I answer or?
Mr. Jackson, let's go ahead.
All right, quick question, since North Highland Park just came about, and I hate to ask you, because I don't like putting you on the spot. How much do we have available for North Highland Park so that people can kind of have an understanding as to why it was deemed over budget?
Go ahead.
No, no, because, you know, we're planning to reject the bid tonight because it's over budget. So how much do we have available for one North Highland Park?
So we initially had American Rescue Plan money, ARPA money, that was, that we were going to use for that project. And that was a certain amount, that was a budgeted, I think it was $865,000-ish, something like that. Well, that project turned into a very, you know, it happened in pieces. So we were using that money all along, up until the end of last calendar year, when we had to obligate all of the ARPA money. So we moved the ARPA money, spent it on another project, and we were going to use lodging fee dollars to cover the gap and fill in the rest for the North Highland Park, the rest of the North Highland Park, which was kind of the biddable piece at that point, which is the basketball courts and the whole nine yards. So if I remember, it was rough, we had a budget of roughly 670-ish, 650?
$650,000.
Yeah, so we had $650,000, $650,000 planned for the remaining portion of this project. And that doesn't include the $300,000 or so that we've already spent on it. But, so that, that was what the budget was, and that we were trying to get in, but obviously the bids came back, whatever, whatever they came back at.
And I'm asking just so that people have an idea as to why? And I'm asking just so that people have an idea as to why the budget, I mean, the bids will be rejected, because they know that we had $650,000.
Yeah.
Still dedicated for this project, and these were way over. So I just wanted people to understand.
And that 650 doesn't go away. I mean, it's still there, it's still, and the gentleman who came up here was talking about going back to a, and I don't know the details of the different levels and six feet versus nine feet and all that stuff that they were talking about, but he seems to think that there are cost savings to get everything that's wanted, just in a different way, I guess. But that 650 doesn't go away, it's still there.
Yeah, Marcus, and, you know, I know that Director Carter's kept us all in the loop on it, Marcus, now, so we, we're following along with it. Now, this is not that uncommon, I mean, it's three times over budget. We had the same issue with Stanley Jensen, we had to make severe cuts of about $4 to $5 million at Stanley Jensen. I think we recently had to kick back a budget for Public Works, they're wanting to build a building, and it came back way over budget as well.
Oh, they were silly, silly bids, yeah.
Right, so, yeah, so that's what happened, so. But Kelly's kept, kept us all pretty right, right, Marcus? Yep.
Yeah, and I agree. Like I say, I just wanted the people to understand, that's why we're kicking it back, because we have $650,000 left, but it's severely over there.
And these are guesses, educated guesses at what these things may come back at. We rely on the engineers and the specs that are put into it, and that's where we come up with a budget based on those specs. And then if you have just two bidders and they come back with what they came back at, I mean, it's, you know, it's a little bit out of the range, but it sounds like they've got an avenue to try and go back to one of the original drawings and get, and split out the bids. I mean, that, that's a different thought, I hadn't thought of that, so.
Yeah, we did talk through that with Kelly last week. Now, one more question. I'm looking at this Public Facilities. Is it possible to pull us on from Public Facilities to help finish this North Highland project, considering that is a public facility? I don't know.
That's entirely up to the body here. So the way the ordinance was written, and I did write it, is that you have these four buckets, but it's, it's not so strict, like you have discretion as far as how you, what you want to deem education, what you want to deem infrastructure, what you want to deem public facilities. You know, I'll say Project Star, that's a hot topic too. Well, over half of that thing was infrastructure, but we're not using infrastructure dollars to pay for it. So, I mean, it's, you know, these projects can pull from multiple buckets. So, I mean, if public facility, I believe the terminology is it just is, you know, owned and operated, I guess, within, by the city, which that is a city property now. So, I mean, that's kind of up to you guys and ladies.
No, I was just going to ask, did you have further questions? Any other Counselor have questions for Mr. Oakley this evening? Mr. Oakley, we really thank you for this in-depth report that makes things... Mr. Oakley, we really thank you for this in-depth report that makes things very clear, helps us understand how much we have, how much we're spending, where it's going. It's very clear. It's very helpful. I hope that it will be helpful to the public as well. These documents will be on the front table right after the meeting. You'll be able to pick them up. If there are not enough to go around, we will certainly get some available at City Hall so that you can come by and, and pick up some more. We're, we're very grateful for that detail. Thank you so much, Mr. Oakley, this evening. At this time, we have the opportunity to create a consent agenda. Items that might fall upon our consent agenda this evening include Resolution Number One, to authorize the mayor to have overgrown grass and weeds at 1644 Dodgers Drive, 781 Redmond Lane, 428 Upper Kingston Road abated, and charge any incurred expenses for this abatement process pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Two, to authorize the city attorney to affix the cost for the removal of garbage and rubbish at 115 Yopon Drive. Resolution Number Three, to authorize the city attorney to affix the cost of the removal of garbage and rubbish at 409 Bedford Terrace. Resolution Number Four, to authorize the city attorney to affix the cost for the removal of garbage and rubbish at 1456 South Memorial Drive Lot A. Resolution Number Five, to authorize the city attorney to file weed liens on certain properties. Resolution Number Six, to declare garbage and rubbish at 1259 Cooper Avenue a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Seven, to declare the dilapidated structure at 1259 Cooper Avenue to be unsafe in a public nuisance. Resolution Number Eight, to declare the dilapidated structure at 121 Lee Circle to be unsafe in a public nuisance. Resolution Number Nine, to surplus various items of personal property from the City of Prattville. Resolution Number Ten, to authorize demolition and removal of the dilapidated residential structure located at 819 Wilberforce Avenue, and award a contract to JB Waste Connection LLC at a cost not to exceed $4,000. Resolution Number Eleven, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 115 Sheila Boulevard a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Twelve, to set a public hearing to declare the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at 243 West Sixth Street, 1683 Rambling Brook Lane, 103 Grayland Drive, 132 Huey Street, 104 Oakland Drive, 1259 Cooper Avenue, and 101 Kingswood Drive to be unsafe in a public nuisance, and order their abatement pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Thirteen, to declare the stagnant water at 138 Lina Drive a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Fourteen, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 805 Stonewall Drive a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Fifteen, to declare the stagnant water at 101 Kingswood Drive a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46 City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Sixteen, to reject all bids related to bid number 025-009 for the North Highland Park improvements. Resolution Number Seventeen, to appoint Grant Scott Leach to the Historic Preservation Commish, Commission. Do I hear a motion to create such a consent agenda? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of creating such a consent agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And we now have a consent agenda properly before us. Do I hear a motion to adopt this consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor of adopting this consent agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And the consent agenda is adopted. At this time, we are able to move into our regular agenda for the evening, which begins with ordinance number one, which is to surplus real property located at Old Farm Lane, Prattville, Alabama, 36066. Counselor Sanders, will you introduce this ordinance for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas pursuant to authority granted by Section 11-47-20 Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, the city council is authorized to direct the disposal of any real property needed for public or municipal services, and whereas a 5.7 acre parcel of real property has been identified on Old Farm Lane as shown in Attachment A, which is not needed for public or municipal services. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council, the City of Prattville, that is hereby established and declared that the 5.7 acres, more or less, located along Old Farm Lane South, being the entirety of parcel number 2603070001017.012, and a portion of parcel number 2603070001017.000, together with all the apprentices' rights, ways, privileges, leases, easements, and other rights benefiting or pertaining thereto, any and all improvements is not needed for public or municipal purposes. Be it further ordained by the city council that the property shall be conveyed to Commerce Street Partners LLC or its assigns upon receipt of $950,000 for the said land by deed in addition to the construction of the public roadway, and that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this ordinance. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. By point of order, we must suspend the rules in order to vote on item number one tonight. Do I hear a motion to suspend these rules? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk, will you conduct a roll call vote to suspend the rules?
Counselor Sanders?
Yay.
Counselor Jackson?
Yay.
Counselor Chambers?
Yay.
Counselor Merrick?
Yay.
Counselor Stritchitt?
Yay.
The rules are now suspended, and the ordinance number one is properly before us. Is there discussion regarding ordinance number one from the council? Hearing none. All in favor of ordinance number one, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And ordinance number one is adopted. Item number two is a resolution to amend fiscal year 2025 budget and authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Skipper Consulting Incorporated for a corridor traffic operations assessment for the area around Old Ridge Road from Fairview Avenue to US Highway 31 at a cost not to exceed $59,000. Counselor Chambers, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas the city has identified a need for a corridor traffic operations assessment to be conducted for the area around Old Ridge Road between Fairview Avenue and US Highway 31, and whereas in January 2022, Central Alabama Community College moved into its new location at 1320 Old Ridge Road, which enabled, enabled them to increase enrollment with expanded space. And whereas in June 2025, Central Alabama Community College broke ground on a new Center of Excellence for Innovation and Technology at its Prattville location on Old Ridge Road. And whereas the Ataga County Board of Education Superintendent Lyman Woodfin has also inquired about additional funding for the construction of a, a new high school in the City of Prattville with a proposed location on Old Ridge Road. Whereas the mayor has requested a corridor traffic operations assessment along the Old Ridge Road area to determine infrastructure needs in that area. And whereas Skipper Consulting Incorporated has the ability to provide said traffic study and assessment services for the corridor traffic operat, operations assessment for the Old Ridge Road area at a cost not to exceed $59,000. And whereas Section 41 1651a3 Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, allows contracts to secure services with engineers possessing a high degree of professional skill to be let without competitive bidding. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council, the City of Prattville, that the fiscal year 2025 budget is hereby amended as follows. Decrease the education one cent reserved by $59,000 and increase engineering professional services by $59,000. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with Skipper Consulting Incorporated for said traffic study and assessment services for the corridor traffic operations assessment at a cost not to exceed $59,000, and funds are approved and appropriated by fiscal year 2025 budget line item engineering professional services. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intention of this resolution. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number Two?
Yes, ma'am. I, I just want to kind of reiterate, reiterate what I did, I mentioned at the last council meeting about my current concerns of Old Ridge Road. I think it already needs some infrastructure, and Paxton, are you here?
Yeah.
Okay. I just had a question for you.
I don't know if it's included in the pack or not, but in case it's not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
This details what the annual pack of study will include.
Okay, well, that's kind of where I was going, Paxton, is if you could just go cover a few of the main things that will be part of this assessment, and will it address my concerns of the current infrastructure need of Old Ridge Road?
Yeah, so this study would include Old Ridge Road from 31 to Fairview Avenue. It will also include Fairview Avenue from Old Ridge Road slash McQueen Smith Road to the interstate as well as Old Farm Lane. It'll address the existing conditions and then also take into account the proposed or potential future developments in that area. I don't know if that.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, and obviously, as I mentioned before, big support of education. I'm open to a potential new school and partnering with the Board of Education in the county. I think it's important to understand that we, what the infrastructure needs are, you know, have a plan put together before we, kind of like putting the cart before the horse, so to speak.
That's right.
So I appreciate, and I would appreciate all my fellow council members here getting on board and supporting this. Thank you.
And in order to do this study, you would have to analyze the existing conditions to be able to tell what the future potential developments could, could withstand as well.
Any other counselors have any further discussion on Resolution Number Two? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution Number Two, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And Resolution Number Two is adopted. Resolution Number Three is to approve the project development and cooperation agreement for Project Queen. Counselor Stritchitt, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes. Whereas a recommendation, whereas the city council of the City of Prattville works through with the City of Prattville Economic Development Team to attract and retain economic development projects, and whereas the recommendation has been made for an incentive package for Project Queen. And whereas AJM LLC Prattville, Alabama is proposing to purchase the Prattville Plaza Shopping Center located in Prattville, Ataga County, Alabama, with a street address of 740 East Main Street, Prattville, Alabama, 36067, as more particularly described in the attached Exhibit A parcel number 1905161001005.002, and depicted on the preliminary ALTA NSPS land title survey Prattville Plaza, Prattville, Alabama, attached as Exhibit B containing approximately 10.56 acres and a building containing approximately 130, 339,000, excuse me, 339 square feet, and conduct renovations to a portion of said property for a purpose of establishing a rural king farm and home store with not less than 80,000 square feet RK store. And whereas said company and the city desire to, for the company to rehabilitate and redevelop said property, including establishment of opening that RK store retail location for a mutual beneficial project to increase customer traffic to said property, additionally create an attractive environment for retail operations within the city. Whereas the city endorses and believes that is the best public interest to enter into an agreement with said company pursuant to which they are induced to, to locate their business and establish and operate an RK store on said property. And whereas the city as a public body supports and encourages businesses development and redevelopment in order to increase tax revenues and improve the quality of life of its citizens. Whereas Amendment Number 772 to the Constitution of Alabama, 1901, 940A3 of Recomply Constitution of Alabama, hearing after amendment authorizes to the public body to lend its credit to or grant public funds and things of value in aid or into any corporation or other business entity for the purpose of promoting the economic development of the city. And whereas the redevelopment and renovation of the said property, as described here, is expected to promote economic development and create public benefit, enhance the welfare of the citizens and the City of Prattville's public body, among other things, promotion, promoting local economic and commercial development and stimulating the local economy, increasing the tax revenues of the city as a public body, improving the quality of life for citizens of the city of public body, as a public body, and providing employment opportunities for the citizens of the city of public body. And whereas the city as a public body finds that it is necessary, proper, and in public interest in accordance with Amendment Number 772, that the public body provides certain incentives to said company in connection with the development of the said property for the project by said company and the establishment of an operation of an RK store, and that providing such financial assistance is a public purpose consistent with, in furtherance of the objectives amendment, of Amendment 772. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council, the City of Prattville, concurs that the incentive package be offered and hereby approves the recommendations offered. Be it further resolved that the city council, the city hereby authorizes the mayor to execute for all on behalf of the City of Prattville and all documents and agreements necessary to effectuate the grant of provision and said incentives, and the extent of as a permitted by applicable law, and to take all such further action as shall be necessary or desirable to carry out the purpose and the intent of this resolution. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. A-plus on your reading, by the way, there, Counselor Stritchitt. Your wife would be super proud. This school teacher is too. Is there any discussion on Resolution Number Three?
Yes. Mrs. Hilliard, do you mind if I ask you a couple of questions, please? Regarding this, this project in itself, is, do you consider it a tax-positive one? And if so, can you elaborate a little bit more about that?
Absolutely. So this particular project came to us beginning in October of last year, so that was the first month I was here, and they had been looking at various locations. So this particular location was very attractive to them and to us, as it is a redevelopment in our corridor that's very needed for the future. So this, we look at every project as a return on investment, and what is tax-positive for us as a community. So we will start tax-positive. We will, at the end, when this is finished, as a performance-based incentive, we will more than triple the tax revenue for that shopping center, and the Avalorum will grow nearly 10 times. So it's absolutely a good return on investment, and we are not giving any money upfront whatsoever.
Okay. The Avalorum was my next question, so you, you put them together, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other counselors have any questions for our economic developer? Thank you so much, Ms. Bar.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms., thank you, Hilliard. I'm sorry. Is there any further discussion on Resolution Number Three? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution Number Three, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And Resolution Number Three is adopted. Resolution Number Four is to support Project Magnolia. Counselor Chambers, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas the city council of the City of Prattville works through and with the City of Prattville Economic Development Team to attract and retain economic development, and whereas when necessary, the team calculates reviews, recruits, and offers incentives and other assistance to businesses that are interested in locating within the City of Prattville. And whereas a recommendation has been made for an incentive package for Project Magnolia. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Prattville concurs with this recommendation and supports the incentive package offered. Be it further resolved that the city council hereby authorizes it, the mayor, to execute for and on behalf of the city any and all documents and agreements necessary to effectuate the, the grant and provision of said incentives to the extent and as permitted by applicable law, and to take all such further action as shall be necessary or desirable to carry out the purposes and intent of this resolution. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We, we have a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number Four? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution Number Four, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And Resolution Number Four is adopted. Resolution Number Five is to authorize, I'm sorry, you're out of order at this time. I'm sorry. Resolution Number Five is to authorize the release of funds for the purchase and installation of a 30 by 96 enclosed pole barn from the Web Builders Incorporated for the Parks and Recreation Department at a cost not to exceed $88,750. Counselor Stritchitt, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes. Whereas a need has been identified to replace storm-damaged pole barn for the Parks and Recreation Department, whereas the pole barn on Ridge, on Ridge Road, Ridgewood Road was damaged during a storm, and additional insurance proceeds are available pending repair and replacement. And whereas determined that the purchase of the installation of the new 30 by 96 pole barn to replace the storm-damaged pole barn is in the best interest of the city, and whereas Web Builders Incorporated has the expertise to complete, and said project at a cost not to exceed $88,750, whereas pursuant to Section 39-2-1 Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, said project is a public works project, whereas Code 39-2-2 Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, allows contracts for public works project under $100,000 to be let without bidding. And whereas this is a budgeted expense in Parks and Recreation, now therefore be resolved that the city council, the City of Prattville, funds in an amount not to exceed $88,750,000 for the purchase and installation of said pole barn is hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Web Builders Incorporated. Said funds are approved and appropriated fiscal 2025 budget line item, Parks and Recreation capital outlaid. So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number Five? Hearing none, all in favor of Resolution Number Five, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And Resolution Number Five is adopted. Resolution Number Six is to authorize the City of Prattville to submit an application to the Alabama Department of Transportation for industrial access road IAR grant funding for roadway improvements in the South Industrial Park. Councilor Jackson, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Whereas ALDOT is accepting applications from municipal governments for IAR grant funding, which is due no later than August 1st, 2025, and whereas the City of Prattville desires to apply for funding made available under the IAR grant for roadway improvements to create traditional truck transportation networks inside South Industrial Park, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the mayor hereby authorize to submit the IAR grant application for ALDOT for roadway improvements inside South Industrial Park. Be it further resolved that the City of Prattville commits to matching funds if applicable. Be it further resolved that the mayor hereby authorize to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution, so moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on Resolution Number Six? Hearing none, all in favor of Resolution Number Six, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And Resolution Number Six is adopted. Resolution Number Seven is to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Kissel Entertainment LLC for the rental of a carousel during the month of December for performing and creative arts at a cost not to exceed $29,750. Councilor Stritchick, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Whereas performing and creative arts desire should rent a carousel during the month of December to provide additional entertainment downtown during our Christmas season, and whereas Kissel Entertainment LLC has the necessary means to provide said services and include equipment, staffing during the Christmas season, and whereas the cost of said services not to exceed $29,750, whereas this is a budgeted expense in performing and creative arts, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the funds in the amount not to exceed $29,750 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Kissel Entertainment LLC for carousel rental said fund are approved and appropriated fiscal 2025 budget line item for performing arts, performing and creative arts slash Christmas. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution, so moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number Seven? Hearing none, all in favor of Resolution Number Seven, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And Resolution Number Seven is adopted. At this time, the council will welcome comments from persons present. We will have everyone who wishes to speak tonight line up against the right-hand side between the two walls. You'll be called upon to print your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to address the council. I'm going to use the comments that I read earlier regarding our rules for this time, because some people have slipped in since we had it the first time, so this is simply a reminder that these comment periods have gotten more and more contentious. It is election season, and there are some who will use our time to make personal attacks or tear down an elected official or puff up a candidate, including themselves. Public comment is important. We will keep having this time despite its misuse. A three-minute time period will remain in effect, and I will remind everyone that this period is for comment, not dialogue. You are not entitled to a response here. Note, because I know I will be misquoted, that I did not say that you are not entitled to a response, simply that this time period is not designed for dialogue. I do encourage you, as I always do, to reach out to any of us if you would like to engage further. Yes, ma'am, please state your name and address for the council clerk. You will have three minutes to address us.
Allison Brown, 270 Covey Drive. I originally came in with a different speech in mind today. If there is one thing I do not tolerate at all, it is a human rights violation. In this case, several human rights violations have occurred. This changed when I witnessed, or today I witnessed a blatant unconstitutional operation that occurred under everyone's nose this afternoon. Masked, nameless, badgeless militarized people came into a local Mexican restaurant in Prattville. They showed no warrant, they showed no warrant signed by a judge. Again, masked and fully equipped people with guns and tasers who were collaborating with the Prattville Police Department kidnapped people. They were completely, they looked completely unorganized, by the way. They got a pregnant woman, two 19-year-olds, amongst several others who were unarmed from this location in Prattville. Their family members are scared, they're worried, they're crying, and they're unsure what's going to happen to them. There is no such thing as an illegal citizen. There are only laws that tell you whether you have human rights or you don't. Let's talk about how these people are human beings that are entitled to have a right to a due process under the Constitution of this country. It doesn't matter what you personally believe. It doesn't. Why, why have a constitution when you don't follow it? These are our neighbors. These are people who contribute to our economy through paying taxes, including our 9.5% sales tax to the city, which, by the way, how much, why do we have to base a person's humanity on how bad, how good their work ethic is? Why do we have to tie someone's humanity to their work ethic as an individual? Since when have we ever trusted the federal government? Why should we trust them now? Welfare has turned into workfare. Hard, work hard, save hard, that is viewed as the only path to survival. The thought is always to blame the people but never question the government who set those policies in place. There is no perfect victim. There is no such thing as a perfect victim. That is how they get away with it, and they pit us against each other. When we remain silent in the face of oppression, we side with the oppressor. The wolf never left, it changed clothing. They want us to feel overworked. They want us to feel alone. They want us to lose our voice. They want us to fall in line. A restless, exhausted population will be too tired to see the true deceit occurring at the local government level. We must come together as a community to change. We must question the status quo. If we never question authority, how will anything ever change?
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir, please come forward, state your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
Adam Hunt, 304 Cranbrook Court. I'm Adam Hunt, former president of Prattville Pride. I've been holding my tongue for months, trying to stay respectful, trying to believe that if we just followed the process, if we showed up, spoke up, and played fair, we'd be treated the same as everyone else. But I'm done pretending. I am angry. I'm angry because I've watched this mayor and most of this council sit there with a smug look during public comments, then immediately check out as soon as they think that the cameras are off or their job is done. I've watched most of you refuse to engage unless it's Mayor Gillespie jumping in to defend himself. The one exception is Marcus, and I thank you, sir, for having the integrity to ask follow-up questions and genuinely listen to, to us even when it's uncomfortable. But the rest of you, you treat us like a nuisance, like something you have to endure, and it shows. And, and Bill, please don't ever tell any other people from Prattville that they're, that you are sorry that they got up during public comment time and spoke to you guys like you did at the last meeting. I'm angry because the Robinsons, a hard-working family in District Four, had their home nearly condemned over nonsense code enforcement that feels a lot like retaliation. I'm angry because people in this town are being run over by personal politics disguised as policy. And I am furious at how the mayor continues to cater to a fringe group of busybodies, Cleanup Alabama, who have no actual support outside of Facebook, drama, and conspiracy theories. Most folks in Prattville, even the ones who lean conservative, are tired of the chaos, tired of the overreach, and absolutely sick of being dragged into nonsense because Mayor Gillespie is too afraid to say no to Ray Bowles. You want us to believe that these ghost pavilion rentals in June were real? June 22nd, Hannah Man Reese of Cleanup Alabama reserved Cutters Pond from 9 to 6 for a birthday party, and the place was a ghost town. June 28th, Ray Bowles reserved the same pavilions for a company picnic, no food, no cars, no music, no nothing. You cannot convince me that that was legitimate. You can't, and you know it. That space was blocked to prevent our pride event, and Parks and Recs knew exactly what we were, I mean, what they were doing, because we asked about availability repeatedly and never got a straight answer. Mayor Gillespie, you smiled to my face and treat me with respect, but behind closed doors you allow these peoples to bully us out of our public spaces, out of the parade to which we were granted an injunction to participate, and out of the conversation. You think we don't know what's going on. You think we don't see the power plays and the double standards. You gave Cleanup Alabama whatever they wanted because Ray Bowles supported them, and you're scared of what he has, what he has on you. While I'm not scared, and neither is the community, we're tired of pretending this is normal. And to other council members, you've sat silently through all of this, you've watched it unfold, and chosen comfort over courage. And to Council President Boone, you've made it clear whose side you are on, and it's not ours. I want to end by saying this. I'm excited, genuinely hopeful. New names are on the ballot, new people who will listen, people who care, people who won't sell out their own neighbors for political protection. We're not going away, we're not shrinking back, and you better believe we're watching. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, please come forward, state your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
Dr. Jerry Simms, 141 North Chestnut Street here in Prattville. That Project Magnolia, you told us absolutely nothing. At least give us a draft of your economic development. I understand you can redact the company because it's confidential, but tell us the amount, follow your own rules. To me, that was the most ultra non-transparent thing I've ever heard you pass. Second, second, I, I track all of your incentives, and now I'm going to tell you why the public is a little suspicious of some of your incentives that didn't go so well. Whitney Bank, Project BC, they moved out after six years. I fought for four years and finally got a $30,000 recruitment, and we dropped the ball and we left the bank in the city's name, so we collected no taxes for 10 years on a $5 million building. Project Long Lewis, we gave them an abatement 10 years ago. They said we'll move to Elmore County. Well, we now just renewed another five years. They're not going anywhere. They had the land, they were going to probably do a, a truck facility, and yet we extended it five years and gave them the same threshold of 144,000. Project Fountain, which is Kennebun, that was a beaut. 2017, we gave an abatement to Prattville Properties LLC. Who was that? That was George and Nancy Wallfall. That was a marvelous mistake. Thank God I caught it, or you'd have given rebate to the wrong person. The best one was Project Catfish Autumn Tree. That's where a man who is convicted and on parole came down here and had numerous civic cases against him, Frank Reichel, for aluminum sulfate price fixing, and we sold him land in the industrial park, and guess what he built? Was an aluminum sulfate factory. Marvelous. And the last one, Project Fountain, we created 24 jobs, we gave him 10 years of abatement, and I just calculated, just, just the tax alone that you lost is over $1 million over the next 10 years you gave away in income stream. I don't know if all of you calculate these things, but I've got it all, and I'm tracking it, and I think it's going to come back to bite us.
Thank you, sir. Please come forward, state your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
Hello there, my name is Jessica Hayes, 1954, Chancellor Ridge Road. I had to revise my comments after the mayor's update about the historical market markers, and he's right, they've been ordered. But what he didn't say is that those orders weren't placed until May 3rd and 6th of this year, over two years after the project was funded and the marching orders were given as to what they were supposed to be doing. I called the Alabama Historical Commission, a public entity, last week to confirm, and they directed me to the actual association that they issued the marker from, the one that doesn't require as much research or guidelines as much as the commission does. No one could find notes that there were any payments of any kind, or when it was ordered, or when it would be shipped. You could ask Mrs. Robinson how much she was consulted on the text or the order, but we all know from the last city council meeting she had no idea. That's not just a delay, that's a dismissal. I confirmed that for both markers, the total was only $2,500. So it's a time to address the elephant in the room. Where's the $20,000 in city funds this group has received over its last few years of being? And we have no explanation. We also need to address the other elephant in the room. One of this group's senior advisors is a close friend and public supporter of the mayor, and is now deeply involved in the campaign of another advisor on the same board, who just happens to be running against the mayor's main critic on this council. That's what manipulation looks like. It's those division in the entire community, but especially the black community, and is a known tactic ever since the post-Civil Rights Movement, to keep the black community that has been franchised, keep it disenfranchised. And that is what cowardly, weak, white leaders do. So this is about trust, it's about ethics, it's about, it's about protecting our democracy for our city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Please come forward, state your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
Leah Muir, 301 Watumpka Street, Cavill, E. I. think. So I drive a school bus, and I constantly see all these new neighborhoods coming up. If we could somehow get the builders to do the perimeter of their neighborhood with sidewalks, because there's people that walk, so they have, they put sidewalks in, I don't know if that's a requirement that you ask for in their neighborhoods, but on the outside of their neighborhood, because eventually they'll all connect, and I think it's really important that we need it done. And I'd like my sidewalk done, too, please. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please come forward, state your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
My name is Daniel Woodfin, I live at 103 Second More Drive. I'm just a concerned citizen, trying to gather information that I've been looking for, and I haven't been able to find it. And to me, that's very concerning. The information I'm looking for is in particular about the one cent tax. I've emailed David Oakley, I spoke with Mr. Bill, yes, I gladly take all of this. All of this information, all this would have been good to have if it had been posted beforehand so I could review it and actually, same before you, with halfway, an idea of what y'all were trying to tell me. But the lack of information being available to the public is truly concerning, and, you know, honestly, I can't make rational decisions on what I need to do as a voter, as a citizen, until y'all provide me with the information so I can do my own research. And the fact that the budget is online, but the actual numbers of what is actually going on isn't, is concerning. When you have a budget, you have what you're planning, and then you have actual, there's no actual figures anywhere online that I'm aware of. If there is, please enlighten me. I've called the city, I called down there today, asked twice if that information was available online. I got told no on both of them. I've emailed David Oakley, Carly Sims, failed to get a response today. I've told him I'd be up here. David Oakley disappeared on me instead of speaking with me. Everybody up here seems to be not wanting to be transparent, I think is the word. You want to hide all the information, you don't want to tell me what projects are going on. I have no idea what Project Magnolia is, or project, whatever y'all had going on, because when y'all bring it up, there's no information beforehand for me to research. How am I supposed to know what's going on in the city if the information isn't available publicly? So my, my concern is y'all have an obligation to provide the information to us. And you're not doing it. So to me, each and every one of you are failing to provide the information to the public, and I'm simply asking for financial information to know where my tax money's going. So when someone posts information on Facebook that says, hey, this graph says 8.4% goes to the Otto County Board of Education, I can say, oh, no, those numbers aren't quite right, because you're not including the school resource officers. I can't educate the people around me because you're not providing the information to me. I need information. I need to be educated as a citizen, and I need it to be done by y'all. And for the last 20 years, I have not received it, and honestly, it should be a disgrace, and y'all need to step your game up and educate the public in a way that is appropriate. There's thousands of people on Facebook, by the way. I get arguments, I get called all kinds of names, I've been blocked, I've been persecuted just for speaking up, asking for evidence and proof of these numbers that get posted everywhere, but nobody wants to give me numbers. So again, all I ask is how much money has been brought in from the one cent tax from the inception, which I think is 2021? Where is that money going? How is it being spent? Not the budget, but the actual numbers, because the only information I could find was in the, in the presentation of the budget reports to the council, and all it says is use of one cent funds. It doesn't tell me where reserves are going, it doesn't tell me how It doesn't tell me where reserves are going, it doesn't tell me how much money was brought in, it doesn't allow me to see if there's an increase or decrease in the revenue from year to year. You're allowing me to not interpret any information whatsoever, and to me, that is a disgrace to every single one of y'all to not provide the information needed to your citizens that you're supposed to represent.
Yes.
Do better.
Yeah.
Do better.
Yes, sir. Next, if you will come forward, please state your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
Me, Ed Matrals, Pastor Patrick Lucas, 1211 Caliber Crossing. My issue is a little different. I'm more concerned about voter integration, because I have a list of a petition here. It happened in the county with Commissioner Studdemire, because one minute he won, and then he lost. And I'm concerned, because there are element in the community that says, we don't want him to run, so we get somebody to run against him, and then they got a petition with a lot of fake names on it. How do I know they're fake? Because my ex-mother, my ex-in-law's names are on here. And my father-in-law was in the hospital fighting for his life, and he died, but his signature's on here. And then the wife, she's older, she, I mean, her name is on here as well. So when I called my ex and asked, did they sign anything? She said, no, because, one, you was in the hospital when you saw dad in the hospital, two, I do all this signing, because they're older and they don't understand. So I'm more afraid of voter integrity. I'm sorry, integrity, because when it seems like, I'll just say, Councilman Jackson, you're not popular, sir, and I'm afraid that some of this will happen to you. I'm afraid of voter ballots not being turned in properly. I'm afraid of the counts being off, because what certain people want is what certain people get. And when folks don't get what they want, then there goes to retaliation and all this stuff. I'm not concerned about retaliation, but a lot of people are, and a lot of people won't say what's on their mind, because if they say it, they're going to be targeted. That shouldn't be here in the great city of Prattville. But I'm afraid that this election, because as the Councilman Boone said, is very hostile, it's very, and folks are doing anything and everything to hold their seats, but my thing, if you're not going to be for all the people, you don't need to be sitting there in the first place. Have a good evening.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Please come forward, state your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
Ruben Gardner, 550 Selma Highway. And my concern is, is about my building, and this is item number 10, and that's 819 Whibleforth. And really, don't nobody really know, was nothing wrong with that building, and it was a tree limb fell in the top, and the roof system, it took me 28 months to get a permit so the ceiling fell in, so it destroyed inside. I was gave an option, and I was going to go in and clean my building. I'm a general contractor by trade, 44 years, and anything that I need to do to my own building, I can do it. And please do not send a general contractor to do the same work that I do. I can do it myself. I've done work for the city of Prattville, I've done work throughout the state of Alabama, so I can do my own building, and I've done tests. Nothing wrong with my building, it's just the ceiling. And if you didn't issue me a permit in eight months and it fell in and destroyed the interior, then the city of Prattville is responsible for it. I didn't touch the building until I got a permit. Now that I got a permit, yeah, I had a few ill problems, so I couldn't really get on a piece of equipment, according to my doctor. Please do not let anybody touch that Masonic Lodge building, and what you don't know about the Masonic Lodge building is not the same as a regular building. If you touch that Masonic Lodge building, I'm going to call Birmingham, as well as Washington DC, and tell them a Masonic Lodge building has been, what you call it, destroyed by a contractor. We don't do that. We shouldn't do that. Leave my building alone, and I'm going to take care of that Masonic, and that's a historical building. That building been there a long time. Ellis Presley been in that building. It's been a lot of people in that building that you don't know anything about. If you're going to do anything, help with that building in the Cottage County area. Please do not send a contractor, and I'm going to take some equipment up there and do it myself, and if I see another piece of equipment on my property, and I take one of my large excavator and scrunch it, then, guess what? It's on my property. Please, and all of you out here know me, yes, I live in, I'm the chairman for the Planning Commission for the City of Prattville, been there for 19 years. I work in the City of Prattville. I helped a lot of people in the City of Prattville. That's what I do. So, and I just saw this on the agenda, and all I was going to do is go in and clean my building and put a new roof system on at my cost, but if you touch my building, then I'm going to talk to my people and say, okay, they destroyed my building, so the City of Prattville owed me a brand-new building, because if you hadn't issued me that permit, and it costs $700 for me to redo the roof, and I do roof system myself, and I put a new roof system on there, I do roof myself, and if you touch my building, then I expect the city of Prattville to build me a new Masonic Lodge building. And, yeah, and I love my building, and I got a lot, a lot of information out of that building, and a lot of training out of that building. Please do not touch my building. Y'all get that some thought. And I say again, and this is not a threat, this is a promise, I'm going to go in and take care of my building.
Yes, sir. Your time is up. Mr. Mayor, would you like to address this?
Mr. Gardner, if you don't mind, please double-check the address. It is not your location.
Well, I've had some comments, and that's while I'm speaking. I know what you're saying, but I've had some comments, and the comments did not come from this. It's that some people told me, and I can't tell who named, but they told me that someone was going to destroy my building as well, was going to demo my building. And I wanted to bring it before the council, so if you do hear anything about it, handle it, please. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your comments. Yes, ma'am. Please come forward, state your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
Jane Maddox, 420 Lower Gainesville Road. I've done my best to glue myself to my seat tonight, but as Marcus knows, it's difficult sometimes for me to hold my voice. I'm very angry, and the more I've heard tonight, the angrier I am with all of you. Number one, and I will just, this is a question, I know I'm not allowed to ask a question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Why is this not livestreamed? Our Board of Education meetings are livestreamed. Why can the City of Prattville not livestream there, so that if we can't come, we can at least listen? Where's the technology? I'm sure we have it, and it's available. Number two, at a time, some months ago, I was without representation on this city council, because my counselor had died. I had an issue that I wanted addressed, so I just emailed all the remaining council members. I never received one response, and I know people on this city council. Not one response, and the only time that I finally received an apology was because I brought it to someone's attention here, one of the city council members. I didn't get a thank you for your time, I appreciate your interest, nothing. Then, on top of that, to add to it, I sat at the Doster Center and listened to all the interviews for the council, the council, potential council members for my district, and I heard three or four that had excellent resumes. I actually requested all the resumes, and I reread them. And who did y'all appoint? A former city employee. You overlooked all those that had the experience and the expertise to serve on this board, but you chose one of your own. And that's no offense to you, Mr. Sanders, but that is not right. There's no representation here, and I, for one, am sick of it. If I was younger, I would be right out there in this race. And even for mayor, I would be right out here in this race, and all of you should be ashamed of yourself.
Ms. Maddox, I would like to address one thing. My guess is that if you heard from zero counselors after an email, there might have been a technical difficulty. I can't imagine-
No, I asked that question. Yes, there was a technical difficulty. Y'all ignored the email.
To whom did you ask the question?
What question?
Whether or not there had been a technical difficulty.
I, do I need to name the person that's on that council? And they checked with some others, and they received the email? I mean, I'm not up here because I'm the idiot or I'm stupid. I'm here because I'm a concerned citizen. I love Prattville. I have lived here since 1974, and this is my adopted city.
Yes, ma'am. I just know that I have missed emails before because of technology issues, so I just want to make sure-
Is that technology why we can't have this livestream?
If you have the issue again, please double-check. So I'm very-
I did. I did. And some people did receive it. So I'm sure there were at least two or three that did.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, I have had that experience, so I simply want to make sure-
It didn't happen this time. Did not happen this time.
Okay, thank you so much.
Y'all are not responsive.
I thank you so much. Whomever is next, please come forward, state your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
My name is Shane Caston, 410 Hallmark Drive, former Prattville line. You know, I'm disappointed in this city council. I was here, I've just moved back to the city after eight years being in the county. I'm disappointed in this council for not stepping up and doing more for education. I got a good education in this school system. My son deserves the same chance. We've got four schools I know of that are about 100-plus years old. What the hell are we going to do for them? Nothing. Y'all sit up here, say y'all are for education? Really? No, you're not, because if you were, you'd be doing more for it. You'd be updating these schools. We have two military bases in our backyard, and they choose to go somewhere else because our schools are outdated. Prattville Primary School, the wooden floor is creaking. I talked to Mr. Woodfin. Oh, we're having to patch it. Why? Where's the money going? We don't ever, the citizens are right, we don't get answers. Y'all need to do better.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Whomever is next, if you will please come forward, state your name and address for the council, and you will have three minutes to address us.
Barbara Robinson, 123 White Oak Court, Prattville, Alabama, 36067. I never get answers, but I'm going to ask this question again. I'm going to ask the question, rather I get the answer, I probably won't. Seem like, on all these demolitions and cleanups, it's mostly, especially the houses in the black neighborhoods. You want to demolish, what is the purpose of demolishing a building? Is it to decrease the censors? Because I noticed you all destroyed the house on 7th Street, next to First Baptist Church. You destroyed a nice brick building on 8th Street. It was just that where the house burned, they was working on it, but in the, there's a slab, and I noticed there are other areas that's not African-American. There's a lot of houses, I feel like, they need to be torn down. You start from 1st Street on around, there are some houses too are collabated, but they are never on here. I understand the weed leans and all of that, but the thing is, but you say y'all are here, Prattville is the preferred city. How can be referred when you still showing discrimination? I thought we should be past that by now. I grew up in discrimination, and it's sad that, you know, you putting money and you're building Prattville, but you're building in a circle. It's just certain parts of the circle don't blend in, so you just chop it out. It's like a missing piece to the puzzle. And there's an old cliche said, don't ever cut your nose off to spite your face. And a horse need his tail more than a flame fries. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Whoever is next, please come forward, state your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
My name is Thea Langley. I live at 220 First Street. First of all, I want to say thank you to Daniel Oakley. I texted him last night, and I asked him for some information regarding the penny tax. Was it the penny tax? Yeah, the penny tax. And, no, it was not, I'm sorry. It was the lodging that the Parks and Rec have received since 2021, and I had that in my inbox this morning, so I just want to say thank you for that. One thing that I wanted to bring up in my canvassing, I have been going to, you know, we've all kind of underwent, at least on this side of Memorial, redistricting, and when I am walking through Camilla Estates and a lot of Prattmont, I guess is what that would be called, no one knows that they've been redistricted. Nobody knows. I tell everybody, you know, of my people, you vote at the Doster Center, and they look at me, and they're like, no, we vote at Camilla Baptist. And so I'm wondering what the city is going to do to inform the citizens of their new district and their new voting place, because that is very, very important. Another thing that I noticed tonight in talking about the North Highland Park, I don't know how long we've been talking about the North Highland Park. It seems to me about five years, but I may be wrong, but over the last year, we have started, I don't know if it's Project Star, but it's Amphitheater 1, and then we've also started Amphitheater 2. And so my confusion, or to me, it would be a great thing for us to finish a project before we start another project. And I do concur with Ms. Robinson that it does seem like the North Highlands area does get the shaft a lot. I don't understand that, I hate that, I don't know. I've been up here talking about that a lot, something for us to think about. Another thing that I would like to mention, I was driving down Old Ridge Road Saturday to take food to the DYW, and I guess I don't get out on that side of town very often, and I was amazed at all the houses that have been built. And my question is, it feels like we are behind in terms of forward-thinking. I couldn't help but think, if we had had an impact, an educational impact fee on all of these houses that have been built, we would not be in the situation that we are in and now struggling to determine a penny tax to build schools. How do we build and build and build and build and build and build, but then whenever it comes time to have some accountability, oh, no, 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 that's not us, that's the county. But yes, it's the city that continues to issue these permits without any kind of impact fee, and without any kind of percentage going to the schools. The other thing that we have been behind on is the Pine Level exit. No, no, nothing against our Pine Level people, but that should have never happened. The only exit in Otoga County is now Pine Level rather than the City of Prattville. Back in the day, Matt Gray, not Matt Gray, Gray Price, made the decision to put sewer out to Holiday Inn. That was not in the city limits, that was in the county. That requires forward-thinking-
Ms. Langley, if you can wrap up quickly, thank you.
I sure will, thank you. That requires forward-thinking, partnership, and teamwork, and we all know how we benefit from that now. The last thing is 17 springs. They've got 17 springs because we don't. They've got 17 springs because they were forward-thinking, they worked together. All of the entities, the egos were put aside. The egos were put aside, and they worked together, and that is what I want for the City of Prattville. Forward-thinking. Let's get our head out of the sand, and let's work together. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. I hate, I hate to put you on the spot, Ms. Barlow, but if I may, I do think that what Ms. Langley addressed was important because it affects many people in this room. Would you mind quickly filling us in on how the city is addressing education for redistricting for the city?
I believe you're talking about the redistricting and the voting.
I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Absolutely. The Otoga County and the Elmore County Board of Registars is sending out voter registration cards to every person that is registered to vote. You will have that. As soon as they finish it, Otoga County has printed 4,767 of- I believe was the number that they have printed, and is going in the mail today. Or, I'm sorry, not today. This, they printed it today. It should be going in the mail tomorrow. There's another 24,000 that they still have to print, and it goes out. There's, I think there's almost 29,000. So it takes a little bit of time. And again, this was all part of trying to get the redistricting done in time so that we could have time to get all of this stuff done. Elmore County is working on an issue with their printed cards. They had them printed, but they did not show the actual district. They only showed the actual voting location. And we thought that was going to be too confusing for our residents here. So we are going back to the drawing board with them, trying to get them to reprint them to include the voting district for the, the citizens.
Thank you so much for that update. Yes, sir, you may go ahead. You have three minutes to address the council. But please do state your name again because she's keeping minutes.
Dennis Mullins, 521 Wetherby Trail. And I am a mayoral candidate for the city of Prattville. And yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, it is an election year. I think we all know it. I've been labeled as an aggressor. I've been labeled as a clown. I've been labeled as somebody that does political theater just because I'm running, simply because I'm running to be the mayor of this town because I think it does deserve better. I was building a house one time, got a little story to tell. Building a house one time, walked in on that house for, for a customer. Walked in on that house. Caught some of my subcontractors smoking marijuana in the house. What did I do? I immediately fired them. Immediately. They had to get off my job site. Why? Because my reputation and my name was on the line if my customer would have walked in the door. This is the first time I've ever done social media. I've never done social media before in my life. And the things that I'm seeing on social media now is just, it just blows my mind away at the hatred that's going on just in a simple election. And the thing that I saw, that I just had to bring for you today, is so disturbing that it is an election year. Visual aids tell it all. Mr. Mayor, would you like to read that, sir?
Uh, it's not for the council to, to jump in. You may, you may read that, but this, you're not going to call on the council and put them on the spot.
Okay. Is, is this a ref, is this a reflection of, of who we are? Right here. This is an election year. This is our current CFO that came up here and talked. This is what he put out there at the end of 2020, after the end of the election. I didn't ever see this. I was, I mean, really? So look here. Kiss my ass? I'm sorry. Kiss his ass? Are we still supposed to continue to kiss his ass?
Mr. Mullins, let's try to keep it PG, please.
I'm sorry. I mean, I'm sorry. Wait a minute, wait a minute. Are, are we village idiots?
No, we aren't.
Really? Are we village idiots? Are we clowns? Because we are up here, just concerned citizens for our city. And we want to know what's going on. This is embarrassing. This is embarrassing. Is this who we are as a city? Why is this gentleman not fired? Why does he still have his job?
I do ask that you wrap up quickly. Your timing is up.
This man does not deserve this seat. I'm just going to call it out. It doesn't have to be me, but it does not deserve to be him. This is so shameful and embarrassing. Anybody that's carrying one of his signs in their yard ought to be embarrassed. I'm embarrassed, and I love this city, but I hate to see what it's become just because I'm running in a mayoral race. This ain't political theater. This is who we've become. And it saddens me. And I hope it saddens all the residents here in the city of Prattville. Vote change.
Thank you for your comments. Whomever is next, please come forward, state your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
Hi, John Ling Finnegan, 211 Dear Trace. I wanted to go on Ms. Robinson's comments about the area and the destruction of the homes there. I'm sure, or maybe people are not aware, but over $10 million has been allotted to those three parks downtown. Project Star, Spillway Park, and the Vista Point Park. $10 million at least. And yet, we're destroying people's homes? I mean, it just, it, it boggles my mind, the spending. You guys know, and a lot of people maybe not know, I came to these meetings for years. You know why I quit coming? Because of the shit that you guys have done and the way that you have acted and the money you have spent. I am, I, I mean, I'm almost in tears because I'm so disappointed. And I heard it again tonight. I heard it again tonight. You've had proof, but six, you know what I do? I get the agenda, and I write 66 or 777 for all the things because I know you're going to do it. It's very, very rare that anybody votes against anything. You should be ashamed of yourselves, and I hope almost all of you are removed. I really do. People, get out there and vote. I'm not kidding you. You guys are shameful, and I don't know how you put your heads down at night.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone further to comment this evening? We'll move into our closing comments at this time. Mr. Mayor, do you have comments? Would you like for me to come back to you? The look on your face, I've seen that before. Yes, sir, I certainly will. Counselor Sanders, would you like to make comments? Counselor Jackson, do you have comments for this evening?
Yeah, I guess I'll make one. To kind of address what Pastor Lucas mentioned, you know, I am a little concerned about the integrity of our upcoming election. I do know that, I do know that I'm a target because it's been bragged about, talked about. You know, it's kind of like some hired guns. And it's bothersome considering, I think Pastor Lucas brought up that petition that he had in his hand. And I think some people have seen that petition where majority of the handwriting is the same, allegedly. Some of the people that are now involved in our city election were involved in that petition that went around to get Commissioner Stoudamire removed. So I am concerned because I have had some of my constituents that have, basically, as we would say, voter intimidation. You know, people showing up the house, bothering them. I think that's concerning. I really feel sorry that some of my constituents have had to go through that, especially supporting me, you know? And some of these people are feeling that they are untouchable and that they can go after citizens that have my sign in their yard. So it does concerns me about voter, uh, the integration, I mean, integrity moving forward. And I think that, you know, considering the individuals that are involved in some of the things that they've done. And I know some people have gone to the next level, to the state level, or maybe even to the federal level, that some of this, we may have to get ahead of this and maybe have to get some attorneys and things like that involved, uh, moving forward to make sure that these individuals don't do the things that they've allegedly have accomplished and done before, you know? And we were talking with someone on the state level the other day, and they were talking about, you know, how you have to start worrying about people with some of this absentee ballots and then voting and things like that. So those are issues that we may have to watch considering, like I say, allegedly, some of the individuals involved in this election and how badly some people do want me removed. So we, we, we understand that. And again, to any of my constituents that have been attacked, I apologize. I'm so sorry that you had to go through this from the bottom of my heart. You know, I hate that you're going through it because again, I never would have expected it, but here we are.
Counselor Chambers, do you have closing comments?
Yes, ma'am. I'm a little lighter. I just want to congratulate all the new officers for their graduations, and thank you for your willingness to serve. Thank you.
Counselor Merrick, do you have closing comments?
No, ma'am. No. Well, I do want to congratulate John on Cannon getting married, your daughter, this weekend. And it was a good service, so happy for you and your family.
Counselor Stritchick, do you have closing comments?
Yeah, I'll be brief. Mayor touched on it earlier. Tonight, my wife, some of you may or may not be aware, is a member of the Otoga County Board of Education. She had to resign her position this evening. She's accepted a job working at the state level where she'll have to work with both sides of the Senate and the House. It can be nonpartisan, meaning a Republican or a Democrat. It's bittersweet. She loves this county. She's a educator through and through. And she's honored to serve for three years, but because of her new job, she's going to have to resign her position this evening.
I have no comments other than the announcement of when our next meeting will be, which I will conclude with. Mr. Mayor, I'll coming back to you if you, if you choose to comment at this time.
Yes, ma'am. I will make some additional comments at the next council meeting. But again, I'd like to close with my earlier closing comments. A very good man, Councilman Willie Wood Jr., taught me an important lesson, many lessons. My father did as well, but his was that sometimes you have to agree to disagree. I think Councilman Striplin had one, some good knowledge for us all from time to time.